You all here?
Okay.
Well, to order the meeting of September 12th, this meeting, I've asked Commissioner Moss to open us with the invocation.
Good morning. I'm going to be praying for, in part, wisdom today for us, but also for the students and families who have been affected by some tragedy in the last week or couple of weeks. Dear Lord, we come before you with heavy hearts, grieving those that have been lost recently and lifting up the families who were left behind. Today, we remember and we pray for the students, the families involved in the shootings that were in Colorado, Minneapolis, and we specifically remember Charlie Kirk, who was also assassinated this week. We pray for the, those lost that we commemorate yesterday on September 11 and whose memory still stirs the souls and the hearts of our nation. We pray for comfort for those who mourn. Please strengthen them with your peace that passes all understanding. Let them feel the nearness of your love and know that their loss is not forgotten. Lord, we thank you. We praise you. We do not always know why certain things happen, but may we remember and honor and be there in encouragement, if at all possible, for those who stand up and for those who are impacted by these tragedies. As Americans and as believers and as fellow citizens, we just stand together in grief and in purpose. And I just pray that you will continue to give the people of the United States courage, conviction, and compassion. We pray for these, these families specifically that were directly impacted, that you would bring comfort around them and that you would, you would give them encouragement in what is a dark time. I also pray today for your guidance, for your direction for our meeting. And I ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
The United States of America and to the public which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Justin, the rule call?
Sir. Mr. Berry.
Here.
Mr. Joritzma.
Here.
Mr. Zialstra.
Here.
Mr. Bonama.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mrs. Wenzel. Mr. Teeples.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodey.
Yeah.
Mr. Kiers.
Here.
Mr. Bruegger.
Here.
And Mrs. Medema.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Do we have any correspondence?
None from us.
So this is the first time for, opportunity for public comment. Anyone like to address the board? Please do so.
Good morning, Barbara Lee Van Fornson, City of Grand Haven and from the Momentum Center. I'm here this morning because September is Suicide Awareness Month, and I'd like you to know some of the offerings that are happening at the Momentum Center. First, tonight is our free dinner and movie night. It's free and open to anybody. Dinner is at five o'clock. The movie's at six, but this month we're showing a PG-13 movie called The Sun with Hugh Jackman that deals very honestly and very directly with teen suicide. It's an important movie, but it's not an easy movie. So we're showing it with a trigger warning so that the movie is helpful for discussion and understanding, but not traumatizing on its own. We're following that movie up with a town hall on mental health and parenting to take place September 29. A panel of experts will talk about the mental health of our children, as well as the toll being a parent can take on our own mental health. That town hall is also free and open to anyone. Both events will take place at our Grand Haven location. These are difficult times, and many of us are struggling to find a sense of balance and peace. So I want you to know that we've also launched our Well-Being Collective, a group of practitioners who are volunteering to offer their practices to the community after work hours. You can come and learn about the practices or participate in them yourselves. You can find a calendar for those activities at our website, MomentumCenterGH.org. Finally, in the midst of the pain and the chaos, I want to suggest a formula that we can all practice, a pretty simple formula that a good friend introduced me to: Stillness, Presence, Kindness. To be intentional about taking a few breaths and experiencing stillness in order to ground ourselves and stay in touch with our inner peace. And with that peace, to be able to be fully present with ourselves, with others, and with our world. To be truly present is to see each other and to recognize the light that is within each one of us. And with that insight, to do our best to be kind to one another. Kindness shouldn't be difficult, and kindness, more than anything else, saves lives. So this month, when we bring our awareness to the hopelessness that leads to suicide, let's remember that we can each be the embodiment of hope and kindness in a world that so desperately needs both. Stillness, Presence, Kindness. No one should struggle alone.
Thank you. Anyone else here like to address the board?
Good morning, Chair Teeples Board. I'd like to thank the board for bringing stability to Ottawa County organization by hiring Gary and Ron. You know, I've heard long-term employees refer to them as the best boss ever, and I'm inclined to agree. Thank you. Things are moving in a good direction. Which brings us to today and my desire to comment. There's not one single number in this entire comment. Working here, I've had the opportunity to meet and partner with some of the best people in my career, and I appreciate every single one of them. And if it isn't obvious to you, every employee is listening to what you say and what we're waiting for your decision today. It's a big one. But most of all, over the past years, I've had the opportunity to work with several administrators. And while there have been challenges at times, I've remained committed to doing that with respect. I intend to extend that same respect to who you select today. My question for you is, will you?
Thank you. Anyone else here like to address the board?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Board. Thank you all for being here today. I'm Joe Bush, your Water Resources Commissioner. Today is a very important day, as each and every one of you know. I've been here a long time. I've seen the good. I've seen the bad. I've seen the great. I've seen the ugly. I've seen what works and I've seen what hasn't worked. I appreciate, again, I'll say what Karen said. I appreciate each and every one of you. First, I want to say thank you to Ron and Gary for stepping up and getting us to where we are today. It was a process. I also appreciate Karen to put a budget together and to put the things that she does together is very important. But what this board does is very important to not just the staff at Ottawa County, but to 300,000-plus residents in this county. You are all leaders, and you're going to pick a new leader today. I appreciate all the applicants, the top five. I watched the interviews, not live. I had to go back after and watch. They're all very qualified. They're all very good. They all have a special talent, just like each and every one of you have a talent. And they have their faults as well. But to say their faults, I think their positives outweigh. That's why they're the top five. I just want to say I'm here in support of Patrick Waterman. I know some people aren't. I've worked side by side with Patrick Waterman for many, many years. And even though him and I have had our disagreements, for sure, we've also had our positive outcomes, positive solutions. We're not perfect. We live in a time right now where it's been very challenging to some of my questions from my kids. Dad, what's next? Who's next? What's going to happen? All I concentrate on when I wake up every morning is look in the mirror and say, Joe, how can you be the best that you can be today? I can't change other people, but I can live by example. I know each and every one of you live by example in your own communities, in your own district, and I got the whole county. So I'm out there every day knowing what's going on in our county, and I think important leadership is where we need to be. So I want to thank each and every one of you for being a commissioner, even though there's differences, there's challenges, but you're all very passionate about this county. And today's decision is very, very important. So again, I just want to say I support Patrick Waterman. Paul Sacks and I are very good colleagues. I respect Paul Sacks a lot. He's got a lot of talent. He's a man of many things going in his department, and I respect him a lot. But I think moving Ottawa County forward, I think Patrick would be the right guy. Just my opinion. Thank you for your time and good luck on your vote today.
Thank you. Anyone else here? Please identify yourself if you would. Thank you.
I'm Cynthia Lorkey in Grand Haven Township, District Nine. I also want to say, add on to Barbara's comment. We need to be still and spend time in God's Word, and I think a lot of people will find comfort in that. I would just want to provide my comment about the new administrator that's going to be voted on today. And I don't want to see this county going backwards where we were before. I have seen and have heard, you know, some of the supportive policies that one of the candidates has had, saying we have pregnant people. There are no pregnant people. There are pregnant women. And those are God's truth. There are two sexes, male and female. So also, I don't want this administrator getting our county into trouble with the DOJ. Maybe an investigation into this county's policies if he takes us down a road that has previously been in this county. Also, I want to bring up my commissioner, Phil Kiers, who I have seen through his candidacy pandering to the Democrats through Organize Ottawa, supporting DEI policies. And that is not the way I want to see this county going. So also, I have heard how he has responded to his constituents, disrespectful, ignoring them. So it comes down to which side are you going to be on? The goats or the sheep? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board?
Good morning. Kathy Van Kempen from Pocatán Township. And I just, I'm sorry if I'm a little nervous and a little ill-prepared because I found out about this about 10 o'clock last night. And it's in regards to the new hire that you are going to be discussing today. I worked in a university setting at Calvin University and Grand Valley State University for over 20 years, almost 25 years. And my experience is there with DEI, which is, I feel very strongly about it, is that it's a racist and segregationist type of department at Grand Valley especially. I was at that university for over six years, and I finally quit when they were going to force me to get the COVID vaccine in order to retain my position there. But I can't say that I was horribly upset about it because it made me so unhappy to be there, to see what they were teaching our young people and that they were forcing down their throats. Grand Valley has six separate commencement services every spring. And if you go online and do a Google search, you'll see that they divide people by ethnic groups and sexual orientation. And they have celebrations for each of those groups. Instead of bringing people together, they force people apart. And I spoke about this when we had a DEI department here because it is not a good thing. And you are segregated against if you think that there are two sexes or if you don't agree with their policies. And I think we saw that this week. And I think we see what it's doing to our young people in the schools. There's never been so much unhappiness and suicide and shootings. And what is different? What are we doing different? So the gentleman you hired, and like I said, I'm ill-prepared because this came up so late last night, and I apologize for not watching things a little closer. But if this gentleman is truly a supporter of DEI and he's infiltrating this building, he's going to bring his beliefs with him, and it makes me very, very sad. And I don't want to be here every month trying to figure out what he's doing. And he left this place when we removed the department. He did not have the confidence of everybody on the committee, all the committees. So why would you want to bring that back into this building? Why wouldn't you want to hire somebody? And I hear there's some really good other people applied or that are being considered.
Thank you.
Why wouldn't you want one of them instead of somebody who has a history here?
Thank you. Ma'am, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Very much. Anyone else like to address the board? Regina, is anyone online?
First is Adria Hill. Adria, if you unmute, state your name and jurisdiction. You have three minutes.
Hello, Adria Hill from Holland Township. This county needs an administrator who can jump in day one, understanding the role, and recognizes the challenges, but with an optimistic view of the future. I believe that Waterman, Dykstra, and Sacks are the best qualified to do that. We also need a leader who recognizes the importance of value of the great employees of this county. During their interviews, all three of those candidates expressed how important employees are to the success of an organization. However, I believe that Waterman and Sacks have an edge as they each have experienced being a leader in this organization and being respected by the employees. Furthermore, we need a leader who can handle high-pressure situations with professionalism. Whether it is a tough union negotiating, negotiation, an emergency situation affecting the county, or personal attacks, this person needs to maintain decorum. Over the last few years, Paul Sacks has always approached this board with a calm and steady demeanor. And during Waterman's interview, we saw how he was able to handle personal attacks. He listened. He considered what was being stated, and he calmly responded. I hope this board strongly considers Waterman and Sacks as its next administrator. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next public comment is Dan Winarsky. Dan, if you'd unmute yourself, state your name and jurisdiction. You have three minutes.
Thanks, Justin. Dan Winarsky, Georgetown Township. I'm also the chairman of the Ottawa County Building Authority and a member of the Ottawa County Insurance Authority. I know, Mr. Teeples, you knew that, but I didn't know if all the other commissioners knew that as well. I am encouraged by the progress that's being made. I do, I do want to say that I believe that four of the candidates would be able to move us forward towards unity. I know, Mr. Chair, you've talked about wanting to build bridges and promote unity. I think Mr. Waterman is doing a great job at City of Wyoming. I think he should continue to gain experience there. I think the other four candidates have real-world experience of leadership, either leading departments or leading cities or leading university in one case. So I would encourage the entire board to, if you truly want to move forward and build bridges, build unity, there are four candidates to choose from. One candidate, again, like I said, I don't, I don't want to bash Mr. Waterman. From what I hear, he's doing a great job in his current position as an assistant. I think he should continue in that position and gain more experience. So this is a chance for the board to move beyond some of the divisiveness of the past. And I would encourage the, the entire board to try to find one of those other four candidates who have the real-world experience to be able to unite behind. All five, I would echo what other people said. All five candidates bring great things. But that is my encouragement, is to truly move forward with unity and choose one of those other four candidates. Thank you very much, and I will be praying for all of you to, that God would grant you wisdom in your decision today. Thank you for all the hard work that you put in.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All the online public comments.
Okay, let's move on. I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's go to number seven, motion, I need a motion for the consent resolution.
Support.
Anybody, you have any comments about the minutes? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next action item, administrator selection, motion to approve each commissioner identifying one administrator candidate by ballot. one administrator candidate by ballot or tabulation and selection by majority vote to determine the next county administrator.
So moved.
Support.
All right. Anyone, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so what I think we should do here, is a suggestion, is that, like we did when we picked the candidates to be interviewed, I would suggest that at a minimum, everybody take about three minutes to express your point of view for the public to hear what you're thinking, and then whatever else discussion anybody else wants to participate in here. So you want to start? Anybody wants, anybody want to start? I don't.
I'll start it. Yeah, I guess I have a couple of different quick points. I'm very thankful we're here today, glad we are looking at these candidates. There's, there's some really standout individuals who have led large organizations. I am very interested in having discussion here this morning among board members for who, which one of those candidates would bring all of us together to move forward for Ottawa County? That's what I'm most interested in. I went into this process with one person in mind, I still like that person, I would vote for that person, but as I went through and I watched the citizen interviews, participated in the board interviews, and then analyzed their qualifications, I created a ranking system and I gave everybody ranks and numbers and looked at the totals. So I do, I do believe that Matt Farrar and Chris Kokolsky have the greatest experience as it relates to this job. They worked in organizations where the population was in Muskegon, almost 180,000, and for Chris in populations of 117,000. The other candidates, while they have unique qualifications, have not worked in that size organizations, definitely not very long. So I also appreciate Kurt's, Kurt Dykstra's experience, I think he would do a great job leading in Ottawa. Patrick has had a lot of experience in the city of Hudsonville. I think the city of Hudsonville is only 7,000 residents, so it's a very small unit of government. And Paul has been here for many years, and I, I respect Paul and I enjoy working with him. I guess I'd echo some of what Joe Bush said, and at the same time, has had less direct, top-level experience as, you know, like an administrator or a deputy administrator, where some of these other candidates just have, have those qualifications. So those are my overall thoughts, and I would love to go back and forth a little bit after people speak and, and see what, where we could meet. Thank you.
Yeah. I appreciate a lot of Joe's points, you know, I'm excited we're, you know, at this pretty significant step forward. We do have five excellent choices, right? However, the motion is for to identify one administrator candidate, and I firmly believe that Patrick Waterman will most bring stability and pragmatic vision our county requires. We need to progress forward. I understand that there have been issues, but, you know, it's the only commissioner who's worked alongside Mr. Waterman during his entire tenure here, and alongside Mr. Waterman on the Housing Commission, I attest to his integrity, his character, his commitment to pursuing the best of all for all Ottawa County residents, and I do believe he's the best choice for the next administrative Ottawa County, so I will be voting for Patrick Waterman.
You get to call on people, not me.
I had, have had several people contact me regarding Mr. Waterman. These, this is one of the emails that I received. I didn't get any positive responses from people, people about Mr. Waterman, sorry, about Mr. Waterman. So I'm, I think that I'm just going to read this and then go from there. Dear Ottawa County Commissioners, based on my experience dealing with Patrick Waterman when he was the Hudsonville City Manager, I urge you to not vote for him as the Ottawa County Administrator. As City Manager, he threatened to take my property through the use of eminent domain. Under this coercion, the city eventually bought a part of my property through a process that was terrible for me. In addition, I knew they would need more property, and he was lying about the amount of property needed for the project. He gave me many assurances, both verbally and eventually in writing, that the project would be contained on the property that they were taking. Two years later, his lies were confirmed when the city of Hudsonville again forced me to give up more of my property. This was a, this was reliving a nightmare for me and another expense of the city's time due to Patrick, Patrick Waterman's unethical behavior. I hope you can choose another candidate who does not treat the citizens of Ottawa County so poorly. I think that he is not going to unite us as a county, not just us as a board, our county members who have contacted us repeatedly. I also think that yesterday, when he was asked if he knew about DEI in his job description, description that had been changed more than once during his tenure, and he said with a straight face that he had no idea. He also didn't have any idea about an email that was written that he knew about but said he didn't know about. This is a track record, record for me of lying that's unethical. He called himself a Christian. I would hope that he would always be ethical and not lie like that. He's done it to our community members, he's done it to us on this board. I do not think he is the right fit for our county.
Next, anyone?
I can go, Jim. Okay, Phil. I've had a lot of positive feedback from different employees that have worked with the past Assistant Administrator, Patrick, and they urged me, as Joe has, that, that they would really like to see him back. He created a lot of confidence in employees here, created a lot of trust, and they really appreciated work with him. I have worked with Patrick probably 15 years ago with different things I did in Hudsonville and through the county, and I have nothing but respect for Patrick. I think Matt Barr from Muskegon County is, is a great applicant. I think he would do a fine job here, too, but in my opinion, I think I'm going to vote for Patrick Waterman.
Well, Allison?
I, I, I don't have my personal thoughts that I want to quite share yet, but I just want to add on to something that Phil shared this morning. I do think what our employees say matters, something that I've taken to heart over the last couple of years, is that sometimes when you're in the board majority in the leadership positions, the people that feel comfortable sharing with you because you're in the board leadership, those are the ones that you're going to hear from more quickly, and when you are in the minority, and maybe those who think similarly as you, don't always feel comfortable in sharing their cards because they're currently feeling like they're in the minority. I guess I'd really like to look at our staff as a whole unit versus them feeling like they're divided against one another still. I think that's what happened when we had John Gibbs here. I think that we had a lot of division, and from my part of it, I take, I've shared that before, that if I could go back and redo that process, I would. I respect the relationships that some of you have built with him, with Patrick. I also think that he is a hard worker. I really would love to move together as a board, finding one of the other four. Yes, I have, I have someone that I would love to get behind and support, but I would actually get behind any of the other four. If I heard anything else from any of, whether it's Commissioner Barry, Commissioner Zalestra, Commissioner Keiers, Commissioner Teeples, Commissioner Bruger, Commissioner Bonama, Commissioner If I saw anything from you guys that gives us that hope, not just for me, like it's, it's for our constituents, it's for our staff, we have such an opportunity to lead together. And I have some other prepared thoughts that I might want to share, but I just wanted to respond, I guess, to Commissioner Keier's current thought process.
What else?
Yeah, I'll go. I didn't write anything down this morning. So off the cuff, five excellent candidates. For me, two rose to the top, one in particular, but I will say that for all of, for the individual that we do eventually hire, please consider looking at the other four candidates as potentials for your deputy. You will ultimately make that call, it's not up to the board, it's up to you, but in some of the invitations that we sent out, some of the individuals that we even interviewed in the last few days, I've seen them as excellent, second-in-commands. Where they lack in experience that the individual that I'm going to be voting for has, they have loads of, excuse me, where they lack in experience when it comes to county government, they have excellent CVs, resumes, where they have performed their duties very, very well, and I could see any of these individuals coming to Ottawa County. As for the individual that I'm going to pick, I had two that rose to the top, as I said, but after the interviews on Wednesday and how they transpired, seeing one applicant in particular, Patrick Waterman, handle the situation under the fire that he was put through, it gave me a little view into what he and many of our Ottawa County employees went through. He struggled and he stuck with it for eight months in a very, very difficult situation, and for him to have the courage to stand, to come back, speaks volumes to me. And I can't help but think that we are, we have the opportunity in casting our vote today to right a wrong that was done. And so I'll be voting to do that, and I'll be voting for Patrick Waterman. Thank you.
Jim Sylvia, anything?
Go ahead, Jim.
I'll jump in here. Again, I wasn't aware we were going to be making comments, so I didn't prepare anything, but off the cuff here, I went into this, first of all, I want to thank everyone that was involved in this whole process. I think we got down to a pool of excellent candidates. I think we had five individuals that could do the job. We're charged now with trying to determine the person who is the best selection for the job, however. At the very beginning, as we started this process, I identified some of the characteristics I was looking for was somebody who has done the job or has had comparable responsibilities or education training to, to do the job as a county administrator. I also wanted to see a, see a candidate who was, had a commitment to Ottawa County and had a connection, whether that was from, from here, grew up here, went to school here, worked here, some kind of a commitment to the county itself. We went into the process, I knew Paul Sax, obviously, and I know Kurt Dykstra for quite a while now, too, but other than that, I just had an open mind on the other three candidates that came in. Sat through two of the community work group interviews, saw videos of the other three, read all the application material, the answers to the questions. We had our, our meeting on Wed, was that Wednesday? These days are blending together. I thought that was very enlightening. I sat last night and went through all the notes from the work group, just, just reviewing the impressions that they had. Again, not that they were deciding, but just giving us some feedback on what they gleaned from the, from their interview with the candidates. And to me, Patrick Waterman, master's degree in public administration, a long track record, working in municipal government, experience here at Ottawa County. Apparently consistently, great reviews, has, has done a tremendous job at every station he's had along the way, but some of the criticism that has come, that he's somehow connected to DEI, and I don't quite understand how he came in here at 22. Anything that was happening with DEI or with COVID response was already in, in the cake. And then that he went to what was described as went to a liberal city. Well, I don't consider Wyoming to be a liberal city. Most of us, a lot of us know Ken Vanderwood, had served on city council at Wyoming since 2006 and was elected mayor of Wyoming in 2022. That's not exactly a hair-on-fire liberal by any stretch of the imagination, anybody that knows him. But the biggest, biggest, biggest thing here is the administrator is not a policy position. The board sets the policy. The administrator carries out the, the will of the board. So what we're looking for is a person that can make the trains run on time, not to tell us how they're supposed to go. I think Patrick is, is fully qualified to do that. I think he's excellently prepared by his education, his experience, and I think his overall temperament. I know there was a situation, a specific situation with some specific commissioners here at the past, but it just doesn't seem to line up with his work history over 25-some years or so. So I will be supporting Patrick Waterman. Sylvia?
Okay, I'm just going to share a little feedback from some of the things you guys have said, but also had some things I wanted to express. I do want to touch on Allison's comments about employees. We found when we first began serving that there were many conservative employees here who felt they couldn't speak, they couldn't share their views, and across America, conservatives can't speak. We have seen what happens when conservatives speak, and the same has been true here in our county. They've been afraid to even reveal what their personal thoughts or beliefs are here. The truth is that prior leadership had built a progressive stronghold that was difficult for conservatives to even be hired into or to maintain employment, and that even continued while we had the board majority, and it absolutely is true today. So it is, they are not a group of employees that we are going to readily hear from. Ideas matter, discernment matters, and who we choose to be our leaders matter. Our county and our nation has gone through times where we have had weak leaders with no discernment, and we've almost lost our nation over it. America's children have been harmed, including here in Ottawa County, and too many of our people now hate each other. Those who have been in leadership during these times and did nothing or promoted dangerous ideology should no longer lead our communities. Where there are candidates with excellence and merit who have not participated in these things, they should be promoted. Ottawa County does not need more division. We have a choice today to either continue down the problematic path of sympathy with progressivism, which has led to a really difficult environment here for all employees, or chart a new course together. I'm choosing a new course today, and I hope you do, too. There are four excellent candidates available for us to choose from, candidates with excellent educational backgrounds and extensive and relevant professional experience. Each one of those candidates could bring this board together in unity. When looking at these candidates, I was looking for a few things. I'm looking for excellence and merit, their work history and their ability to lead the county, including both this board and our staff in unity. our staff in unity. And when I look at all of those things, one candidate stood out to me, and that is Matthew Farrar. I was like, Allison, I could get behind any of the other four besides Patrick Waterman. I think they all, they all bring, you know, a great package of skills and experience and knowledge where any of them would be workable. Patrick Waterman, to me, is not. And so I have hoped, it has been a real sincere hope, that this board really meant what they said when they campaigned and ran on calming this county down, bringing unity, and having us go forward together. I really, really had hoped that you actually meant that. The board minority, through Joe, has expressed that there is one candidate that is not workable, that will absolutely not bring unity to this board. That has been made clear. If you make that choice today, you know what you're doing, and you are not fulfilling your campaign promises. You are choosing to continue to divide this county. That's all I have.
Jordan? Yeah. I'm really happy with how this process has gone, actually. I think we've been as transparent, as open as possible. We've heard from community leaders. We got a chance to hear from five extremely qualified individuals. Thank you to the staff for making this happen. I think we're gonna find our person today. I hope that person is Patrick. I, I think he's eminently qualified. All of you guys have talked about his qualifications and his merits. But I did just want to speak on the unity point, and I completely agree, unity, it would be fantastic. You guys are clearly consistently asking us to change our vote to unify with you. So I would ask you, in the name of unity, to change your vote to unify with us. I don't understand why the burden of unity is one-sided. So I think we have an opportunity here to choose the person that we're gonna have, you know, 11 to 0. And I would hope that everyone rallies around Patrick and sends a good message that, hey, we support you and we think you're gonna do a good job. So that's it. Thanks.
Jacob?
Very well said, Commissioner George Ma. I echo all of those words and many of yours. Merit, excellence, these are things that we need to look for when we're hiring. When I knocked doors for my campaign to run for the seat again, which was a hard decision, not knowing what the future would hold, would it hold more chaos? Would it, would it have the potential for stability? I bet on the opportunity to get reelected, to be able to vote today, to return competence and stability to those that I knocked the door of begging for it. Begging to see Ottawa County be held in a high standard again and not the ridicule of other counties, because this is an amazing place to live and work. With Patrick Waterman, you have somebody that even in the face of disrespect, he showed you respect. If you're wondering what kind of character the man has, you can look at it right there. You continued to show him disrespect, and he continued to double down on respecting you. If you choose not to unify and work with the man, that's, that's your own loss. That's your own loss. Because, you know, I, I receive emails about all five of these candidates, and I am so impressed with the talent pool that made themselves available to us. We had an enormous number of people that said they want to come and lead Ottawa County, because Ottawa County is an amazing place to live and work. Great opportunity. The cream rose to the top. All five of those, I received concerns. I've received concerns about some of you, from your family members.
Two.
When you look at the situation that we're in right now, I returned those emails with a question of specifically when it came to this accusation of DEI and promoting it and championing it of Patrick Waterman. I asked them specifically, what is the case? Can you give me an example where Patrick Waterman has done some wrongdoing in some way, shape, or form? And none of them could return anything other than talking points that they received from you or some of the other OI-affiliated commissioners. And I think that, that is so sad that you, your efforts to assassinate another man's character like that with unfounded actions continues to happen this day. So I, when I look at Patrick Waterman, here's what I know. He's a professional. He is composed. He is competent. He does not require a learning curve. We've seen how expensive that can be after hire after hire that you put in place. He's ready day one. He's a family man. Two adult daughters and a fantastic son who's a senior in Hudsonville. The fruit of his tree looks good. The excellence that he has brought to each of his positions has been proclaimed by many of his coworkers. He's the man that knows how to execute. There's a lot of people that look good on paper, but they don't know how to execute. At the end of the day, that's what matters, because it's our vision that he is to execute. DEI does not exist in Ottawa County without it being in our strategic plan. DEI is not in our strategic plan in Ottawa County. It's been tried, and it fell short. Money was spent on it, the evidence was not there to support its value. It's not coming back. Just because you think that Patrick Waterman had a line written inside of his job description does not mean that he holds that kind of authority over us, and you know better than that. Patrick Waterman is the best man for this job. That's what I was looking for, to bring stability, to bring confidence. He holds the respect of many key leaders in this building, and that's what we need to be able to accomplish what's best for the services that we aim to give to the people of Ottawa County. We need the best man that can execute and deliver that to, to everyone. And you know what? In spite of all this, that you and Commissioner Rhodey and, and others have said, he's gonna serve you just like he serves me, just like he serves Chairman Teeples and Bruegger and on, all of us, because that's who he is. He's a professional. My support's for Patrick Waterman.
Nelson?
Before I share, I guess, just a few more thoughts, is there, is there any one on this board that's willing to consider any of the other four? And while Commissioner George Ma talked about us four moving to the one, four is a lot bigger pool than one. And I'm again asking if there's, if there's anyone here that's willing to have an open conversation with me, with the others, about finding some common ground together? Before I share any other thoughts, is there, I'm just looking, is there anyone that's willing to have that conversation?
Want to repeat what I said. I mean, the motion is to select, to identify one administrative candidate. I think we've, those who have spoken, for the most part, have identified their one candidate. I don't perceive this motion as being anything other than that.
That doesn't mean that someone can't have a different opinion, since they've stated there. And it also doesn't mean Chair Teeples asked that this could be a conversation. And so I think we are allowed to have professional conversations with one another for our community. And so I'm just, I'm again asking, is there anyone willing to entertain a serious conversation about any of the other four?
Are you willing to entertain a serious conversation about voting for Patrick?
Can you be more specific on that?
You're asking us to entertain?
That is as specific as it gets.
About one of the other candidates? Are you willing to entertain a conversation about voting for Patrick?
I'm gonna go back to my conversation on Wednesday. Now, my commissioner comments, I invited every single one of you to give me a call to ask me specifically how the trust had been betrayed by Patrick. Not one of you picked up the phone, not one.
Did you call me?
I gave an open invite to every single one of you.
Oh, no. I don't remember that, but anyway, yeah.
I gave an, I gave an open invite to every one of you to have an open dialogue, because some things aren't necessarily things that you need to air in front of everyone. So I was trying to take the high bar.
That was offered in closed session, but you didn't want to go into closed session. Honest communication is important. I think we would have benefited from that.
All right.
Spared, spared people's reputation at the same time.
So I'm hearing the answer is no to my question.
Well, I, I will say, I had Joe, Joe Moss and I had a pretty good conversation, good amount of time. He had a chance to explain his thoughts and position to me, and likewise, I had opportunity to do that with him. And I think we kind of agreed to disagree, but I think we had a full discussion on that.
I greatly appreciated that, Jim. It was, it was, I believe, what, 30 minutes? I don't know.
I don't, I don't think that any of us, Allison, are saying we won't consider at the, what you're asking us to do, what to do is to reconsider who we've already expressed our point of view about, right?
All right. Then I, then I'll just share some of my thoughts, if you don't mind. The citizen work group that was put together shared some thoughts about the different individuals and some things that came on Patrick's questionnaires that were filled out, not questionnaires, but the feedback forms.
Mr. Chair, is this allowed to be made public? I just want to make sure that we don't violate anybody's personal.
No, the citizen groups all public.
That's all been made public? Okay, I just want to make sure we didn't step into something.
No, I don't think so. We're fine.
Patrick was the only one that rose to the top with concerns. Not just with some board members here, but with the citizen work group. An underlying concern that he could leave again if the politics of the county becoming, became overwhelming as in the past. Next comment. Well-professional, not dynamic, reserved. Did express caring for and valuing county employees. Can he make the transition that would benefit cap locks all? Staff, commissioners, and that everyone could find acceptable? Quiet man, not self-assured. I need further observations to make a better assessment. A little unclear on innovated ideas for problem solving. This is not just from my thoughts. These are from people tasked that are able to get outside of the motions of the business of the board to make an authentic observation. And so I'm sharing those here today, is that now someone that stood out for merit and excellence was Matt Farrar. Some things that stood out to citizens work group, as well as that stood out to me, was he had a strong understanding of short and long-term grant-funded positions with prior experience. He was a financial guy. He understands fiscal responsibility, and he sounds like he will lean on department heads to help solve some fiscal concerns. Provided many tangible examples from his prior or current experiences throughout the entire interview. He understands Ottawa County is already a well-run county, and he supports the business community and sees Lake Shore Vantage as being an asset to that. He answered questions directly and often provided examples. He communicates well, and is very thoughtful in his answers. He has a strong understanding of local government dynamics. It's important for him to be seen and recognizes that it takes time to build rapport. His experience needed with county government and debts, knowledge of finances. Solid individual, detail-driven, well-spoken, finance at heart, fiscally conservative. He used humor effectively. In my take on that, he was real. And relational. Exceptional in communication, engagement, thoughtfulness, aligned with our county values. Another individual, exceptional candidate who will hit the ground running. Fully accountable individual, welcomes input, great teacher, great listener, great sense of self-discipline, and sees himself as a helper. Wants to make sure that we're all on the same page together, a leader. A calm individual, no panic, in charge. He admits Ottawa County has been very fiscally responsible for years and gave great credit to staff on that. Feels Ottawa County is pro-business, pro-industry, financially on top, everything's done based on relationships, and recognizes that relationships work based on trust and sought, sought to work with everyone and saw his role as helping. Made good eye contact and was personable. Overall, very impressed, and a humble individual. These are all notes that were taken based from the citizen work group that I also recognized were strong in Matt. So I will be voting for Matt Farrar today.
So first of all, I'd like to applaud Gary and Ron and your entire staff for this process of finding this candidate. It was absolutely incredible, and I think the public trusted the process. We learned a lot about each other and candidates, and I'm, I'm particularly proud of how it was handled and what you guys did. So all of you, thank you. The last eight months for me, trying to unify this board and fix problems as the chairman, has been the most difficult time of my career. Sadly, however, I can't help but think that how Commissioner Moss, you treated Patrick during that interview. In my mind, bringing dish, dish, dishonor to this board and county, I feel that it did a major setback to that effort. I don't know, frankly, sitting here today, how or when it's going to get better. I'm very bothered by that. That said, we did have a very strong set of candidates who wouldn't want to be here, and it showed. But I will defend Patrick Waterman all day, because I know this man. For over 12 years, I worked in the trenches with him in all sorts of administration and other matters. I personally have witnessed him as witnessed his unwavering fair treatment of people and his handling of difficult and stressful situations with calmness, focus, and professionalism, exactly how we acted in response to your personal attack. And he is a non-political administrator. I'm not aware of any complaint ever leveled against Patrick Waterman as administrator from anyone, including not from his former board members who repeatedly renewed his employment contract, nor any complaint from any union representative or its members, nor from any citizen he served. And as attorney for the city of Hudsonville during Mr. Waterman's long tenure as city manager, I would have likely known of any such complaint. In fact, however, the opposite is true. People who know and have worked with Patrick Waterman respect him deeply. Patrick Waterman is the best candidate to serve as Ottawa County, serve Ottawa County as its next administrator, and he has my vote.
I just have a follow-up to that. I think it should be stated for the record that Chair Teeples, you and others have referred to my questions yesterday as personal attacks. Well, I highlighted facts and specific instances that I had serious concerns with this individual. These are not facts and questions, they're not personal attacks. When I asked him about his job description, and he claimed he had, it was an error and he didn't know about it, I was asking as much about the fact that his job description says champion of DEI. I, I also wanted to know I, I also wanted to know if he could address that fact, which he then said, no, that's not his job description. These are questions. These are the type of things that I look for in leadership when someone wants to run for the top position of a large organization. Can they address facts with clarity and with truth? Patrick could have simply said, yes, that's my job description. Yes, uh, HR put that in there. But he didn't, he just simply denied it. Facts and questions are not personal attacks just because they, the subject matter offends you. Disagreement does not equal hate. Disagreement of opinion does not equal personal attack. It was my intention yesterday to be as calm and questioning as possible on an important issue, which that's who I am. And I'll continue to do that. But to continue to say that these are personal attacks is a narrative.
Mr. Clerk, can you pass out the ballots?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So Regina has the ballots. There's a, a line on each, on each page for each commissioner. And as soon as you're done filling those out, we can return them and we can read them into the record.
Thank you.
Oh, we are identifying ourselves as well.
Just right down there.
Oh. I, I am identified there. Thank you, Justin. I get a personalized ballot.
It's the only time, Commissioner, that, um, your ballot will have your name on it, just, just so you know.
Election.
Otherwise, we, we don't know how you vote.
That's what you say, Justin. You're saying. I'm sure. Sorry. Didn't have me to fold it. I gotta watch, I gotta watch Phil to see how this works.
Oh, whatever. Secret ballot up here.
I don't think it's a secret how we vote, so.
I have a confession, I took a photo of my ballot, was that, did that invalidate it? Or am I? It, it's now legal. Right, well, we'll go ahead and read these into the rolls. Mr. Chair?
Please.
In no particular order. Commissioner Rhodey, Matthew Farrar. Commissioner Berry, Patrick Waterman. Commissioner Zylstra, Patrick Waterman. Commissioner Joritzma, Patrick Waterman. Commissioner Bonama, Patrick Waterman. Commissioner Bruger, Patrick Waterman. Commissioner Teeples, Patrick Waterman. Commissioner Medema, Matthew Farrar. Commissioner Moss, Matthew Farrar. Commissioner Kires, Patrick Waterman. And Commissioner Wenzel, Matthew Farrar. And so the majority of votes received goes to Patrick Waterman.
Congratulations to Patrick Waterman. Um, next thing on the, let's just move on.
Yeah.
Um, next thing on the agenda is to authorize me to start negotiations with him and then bring a contract back to the board, uh, for consideration.
So moved.
Alright. Uh, anybody have anything, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No, no.
Maybe you want to do a, do a roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Moss?
No.
Mr. Kires?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Bonama?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodey?
No.
Mr. Zylstra?
Yes.
Mrs. Wenzel?
No.
Mrs. Medema?
No.
Mr. Joritzma?
Yes.
Mr. Bruger?
Yes.
And Mr. Teeples?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Okay, are there any, uh, committee reports? Don't think so. Uh, this is the second opportunity for public comment. Anyone like to address the board?
Sheila Dethloff, Holland Township. I just have one comment and then I have a couple of people that I'd like to specifically thank too. Uh, the comment is Joe Moss claims that it wasn't a personal attack on Patrick Waterman on Wednesday. I'd like to just highlight the contrast between how Joe Moss questioned Patrick Waterman on DEI and the email. And how Commissioner Berry questioned Kurt Dykstra on his vote on the LGBTQ anti-discrimination ordinance. If you don't recall, I recommend that you go back and watch the video of the two. One was a calm, measured inquiry that let the candidate know upfront what the concern was. The other was a backdoor attempt at a gotcha. And I think you all know what I'm talking about. Chair Teeples, I want to thank you for how you ran this process. I was impressed with how well you handled everything. Uh, the other person I want to thank is my own commissioner, Mr. Joritzma. Some of you may not know this, but I'm a Democrat. And so ideologically, Commissioner Joritzma and I probably, the percentage of what we agree on is probably in the single digits, I'm guessing. But I'm very impressed with your measured responses here and how you approach things. I don't think I could do the same actually, sitting in that seat. And so I thank you for that.
Thank you.
The praise.
Anyone else like to address the board? Anyone online?
No, sir.
You have somebody.
There is, there is one.
Buddy, there is.
There's one online comment as well.
Oh, there's a lady here, so, welcome.
Gary McHale, uh, West Olive, thanks for the opportunity to address this issue. You know, I find this fascinating as there, you know, there's always the talk of division. And you, here you had an opportunity on, on the third try to bring some unity. And instead, the six, or seven of you, I call it six plus one, have found a way to once again bring back the old and refuse to move forward into the new. So I, I don't know, very often see organizations poll their employees to see who'd like, who they would like to be as their boss. This is rather unusual. I'm glad to saw her, the people say, well, we'd really like to have him back. But that's not your job. Your job is to find the best person for the job to work with all commissioners. And everybody says there was, there was great candidates. In fact, there has been great candidates three times around. And here we are. And this is, I, you know, I don't want to insult Mr. Waterman, I don't know Mr. Waterman. But to pluck him out of the, out of the, on the last round and say, you know, everybody, let's bring this guy back. Um, I find that highly unusual and certainly not an olive branch to the other side. To, when there are sides, let's not pretend there aren't sides. In order to come to a, some kind of a, an org, a time where you can have people working together and agree on another qualified candidate. And you refuse to do that. And I, I hope that all the people of Ottawa County see what you've decided to do and who you're going to pay big bucks to. And to say, oh, you know, Mr. Bonama says, I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to, you know, address him, Mr. Teeples, Mr. Bonama said, DEI is not coming back. Everything else has come back. And no, he doesn't set the, the agendas and he doesn't write the policy, but every, every forward-looking plan can be rewritten. And so, um, I, you know, I just, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not taking that comment to the bank. So I'm disappointed, I'm disappointed that you had an opportunity to, to make, to hire someone that everybody could agree on and you refused to do it. And I think all the people of Ottawa County should be well-aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online, Regina? Okay.
Dan Winarski? Dan, if you want to unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Thanks again, Justin. Uh, Dan Winarski, Georgetown Township. Um, yeah, I am disappointed as well. I think it's pretty clear this is, this was meant to be a, a, a big poke in the eye to, um, all the, the tens of thousands of Ottawa County voters who supported conservative Republican candidates, constitutional conservative Republican candidates. It is, uh, extremely disappointing. I, I would like to issue a, an apology on behalf of, um, you know, people who are in my camp to the, the other four candidates. It seems like it was rigged from the start, unfortunately. Um, those four candidates did a great job. Um, they were unfortunately led to believe that they had a chance when it seems like they apparently did not have a chance from the start. Um, I would, I would like to know information of, um, of the timing. Was, uh, Waterman invited to apply by certain commissioners? It seems like there was probably discussion among the seven who voted for him outside of this meeting, based on the comments that were made. For example, Commissioner Berry pointed out, he didn't, he didn't even know Waterman. He knew other candidates, he knew they were qualified. Um, so why did he vote the, the way he did? Well, perhaps he was encouraged to. Um, but what was the timing of, of when Mr. Waterman applied? But I do, I do feel, I do feel bad for the other four candidates because any one of them would have done a great job of, of bringing unity. And if that's really what people wanted, this was the chance to do it. Um, Commissioner Joritzma gave us a great example of how the establishment defined unity and that is we decide how it happens from the start and you come along with us in that unity. There's a reason why the Democrats support Commissioner Joritzma and, and we saw someone make that comment today. Um, so again, just to reiterate, it seems like it was rigged. It's disappointing that the new board majority is, is doing all the things that they said they weren't going to do and they're doing all the things that they complained about from the start. Um, and they're actually doing them more than what they even say the Ottawa Impact Commissioners did uh, when they were in charge and that's disappointing. I would like to encourage all my constitutional, conservative Republicans out there, don't give up. Um, we've still got four great commissioners and the, uh, the fight is just starting. We've got God on our side, so keep it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, then let's go to the report of the county administrator, the interim county administrator.
Thank you. Thank you all. I just want to say that, uh, I, I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners, all of you, no matter what side you sit on this issue. Uh, because I really believe that you all put in your due diligence on this. I mean, we've been at this literally since like the last of May. Both with an outside firm and then taking it in, in-house. We've taken direction, whether good or bad, from all of yous. Uh, from a lot of staff, from a lot of external people, uh, around the county. So we've, we've listened. Ron and Regina, I gotta say, are, are the key factors on, on trying to put information together to figure out how to get it to each and every one of you, whether it was, you know, running reams of paper or, you know, uh, just sending it, you know, electronically. And there's no question in my mind that you all looked at the stuff that we sent you. And, uh, um, we tried to do our best. I think, uh, you know, we, we give everybody what they wanted and, uh, and it got you to at least today. So I, I thank yous for that. I just happen to believe that it's a good process. It's a process that, uh, myself and Ron will never go through again. You know, so, um, again, I, I want to thank you for doing the work of a commissioner. And, uh, you know, and I, I really do believe a lot of people do appreciate what's went on here.
So, thank you, Gary. Uh, let's, uh, good commissioner comments, uh, Joey, you want to start or off again?
Sure, just briefly, uh, leader sets the tone, personnel is policy. Uh, so, uh, I'm excited to move forward for Ottawa County. And I guess that's it.
Nelson?
Um, just a big thank you to the staff, um, that were involved in a lot of the legwork for the process over the last several months. And Gary, Ron, um, Karen, Regina, um, I know there are many others that, um, I'm not thinking to name at the moment, but just a huge thank you. And, um, just to all the employees that work here, um, you have a lot of value. I appreciate hearing from many of you who come forward and, um, sharing reports that you give, whether it's annually or, um, a little bit more frequently. I appreciate the opportunity that you allow us to ask you questions, even though that might be sometimes uncomfortable, um, for us to be able to learn more, um, to be able to make decisions on behalf of, of the voters of the county. And so you're doing great work here at our county. And so I just want to say thank you for that. And, um, what an opportunity it's been to meet so many qualified candidates along the way. I have a feeling we'll be seeing them again, whether or not, um, it's, you know, right here at our county or if it's at MAC conferences or whatnot. And, um, to work really hard, not to burn bridges with different people. And to be grateful. Today is a new day, it's the day that the Lord has made. And, um, we should rejoice and be glad in it. And so, um, it's, it's a, a privilege to be here in this seat. I'm grateful to serve.
Today is a new day that the Lord has made. I agree. A fresh wind is blowing through Ottawa County, I'm excited for that. Uh, as we turn this corner to this next chapter, uh, my focus is really on the strategic plan. The folks of Ottawa County want to see us get to business and strategy needs to be, uh, presented and put in place so that we can execute. Uh, I'm excited for that to take place. That's where my focus is going to be as finance chair. We've done a really good job with the budget this year, thanks to staff. But there are things that maybe we could take a fresh look at. I know staff is, uh, excited about that too, as we look at what's mandated versus non-mandated spending. You know, these types of, uh, conversations are going to be really good, uh, for us when we have the strategic planning meeting. So, um, yeah, I'm looking forward to having, um, Patrick's help in leading those discussions and, uh, and thankful, again, um, Paul Sacks was right there at the top as well for me. Uh, I just wanted to say that, I didn't get to mention that. And I also want to thank the citizen work group, um, was able to chat with several of them, uh, including my own, um, city councilperson, Sally Gruppin, and, uh, and their work and time invested into this process. I just wanted to personally say thank you too.
Gary and Ron, you're almost done. Thank you for all you've done for us. Really, really grateful. That's all I've got.
Yeah, I'm grateful for the staff, what Gary rendered also is a great process and appreciate the top five and the quality of people we have. You know, I just, I'd like to make one comment about that people only come to the majority of the board. I, I, I don't find that true at all. I worked hard as commissioner all my life. Bring that trust, they're bringing all the employees. And no matter what their opinion is, I can talk to either one personally, like they're my friends. And it's been that way all my life, all the, all the years and, you know, decades I've served down here. So, um, I find that, uh, a really plus that I have with all the staff, so, thank you.
Doug?
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Waterman obviously didn't get the majority of the votes of the commissioners today. And, you know, a number of the commissioners seemed pretty set against him for varied reasons and, um, those are, you know, legitimate reasons for them. I, I hope and expect that Mr. Waterman will, you know, work hard to obtain their confidence as time goes on, you know? But I do think it's important that, you know, we as a board do our job of creating that confidence and creating stability. We're the elected leaders here and we need to show county residents and staff that, you know, we are a team, um, despite our differences and focused on doing the work that, you know, to move our county forward. The residents and staff are counting on that. They deserve our best. Uh, and I'm positive, you know, that we will give them that and over the coming weeks, months, and years.
Jim?
Uh, I'd like to just add, uh, my thoughts with some of the other comments that were made. Uh, big thanks to Gary and Ron for the job you've been doing as interims. We've been well-served by you and I've really enjoyed getting to know both of you and, and working together with you. Want to thank staff, Regina, and everyone else, people I might not even be aware of that were involved with organizing all this information so we had access to, to it.
Want to thank staff, Regina, and everyone else, people I might not even be aware of that were involved with organizing all this information so we had access to it and worked with it. And I want to give thanks to everyone on this board. Despite differences, I'm convinced everybody worked really hard on this and spent a lot of time on it. And this was the primary responsibility we had as we came in as a new board in January. And it was quite, quite an effort to get to this point and I'm aware of all the hard work everybody did. Decisions been made, I hope we can all go forward, we all want what's best for Ottawa County. And a strategic plan is, is going to be a very important exercise for the board to go through. This will set the direction for where we go. This will be the guiding post for budget decisions and how we, how we treat grants that come in and everything. And I think, I think we're in a great position to move forward and I just appreciate everyone's effort.
Andrea? Anything?
I think, there's so much I want to say. I thank everyone here and Ron and Gary, thank you for everything you've done and Regina and Justin for helping with this whole process. I'm going to say I'm saddened, we had a chance to heal our county. Seven people chose not to heal our county. There were individuals that could have done that, that weren't, that didn't have either side as their friend, as Chair Teeples said. It would have been individuals that came in with a clean slate. With us and with our entire staff. And you guys chose not to heal our county and that makes me pretty sad.
Of you?
Over the past decade, our county has been led by weak leaders with weak ideals who prioritize power. And I fear that trend continues. I hope to be proven wrong and I'm committed to ongoing accountability to our community's values. On a positive note, I am so encouraged by America's young people. They are wrestling with ideas and wrestling with policy. And wrestling with, with, you know, their faith. And they are grounded. And man, do we need some of that. So I especially want to encourage our young people to engage in the public square. Your courage and your conviction is greatly needed in our community and in our nation.
So I was remiss by not recognizing the Citizen Work Group and thanking them. It was a critically vital part of this process and I think we all as a board, each one of us, gained a lot from that, from them and for all their work, so. Please, thank you, all you that served on that, on that board. I have no doubt Patrick Waterman will reach out to the best of his ability in a spirit of, of, of good faith to try to move this board together for the betterment of the county, I have no doubt about that. I hope we do too. You know, we may have, we do have differences on this board. Strong differences. But we should not hold it against our new administrator. We should get behind him and support him as well. And I hope we do that. And with that, again, thank you for the process, Ron and Gary, for so much, we'll be, you're not going anywhere yet.